Yeah. Where's Lucy back there?
It's just like in the light.
Do you want it closed? We can ask Claire if it needs to stay.
Make it in first.
Alright, friends, are we ready?
Yeah.
It's seven o'clock, so we're gonna get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, so we will start with the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Moving right along. Six to zero, sorry. We are missing one. Thanks, Ken. And then we're gonna move right on to recognitions tonight, which is so exciting.
I wanna welcome everybody. I know we have some student recognitions tonight, but before we get to that, we'll do an adult recognition, if that's okay. And so, congratulations for you guys coming here. This is our first in-person recognition. And before we get to our students, I wanted to pause to recognize Erica Chandler. She was, she received the award for Professional of the Year from her professional organization. So please join me in congratulating Erica on that award. An award from our board presence, some flowers, and also a certificate. And so, just a little bit of background, Erica is our communications director, and the professional group that she's a part of is called the School Public Relations Association. She currently serves as the president of the organization. She's also received an award previously from them. She's also been awarded at the national level as a frontrunner. So it really isn't a surprise to any of us that she would get this type of an award, but it is always nice that someone does get recognized. Sometimes you know there's a lot of people that deserve the recognition and they just never get it. And then I was fortunate enough to be on hand when she received the recognition. There's a superintendent organization and school communication organization that does a conference collaboratively. So I had the good fortune to be there, and I appreciate our board president, Michelle Burford, being there when she got the award as well. So, once again, congratulations to Erica. I know she does a lot of communication, but she does anything she's asked to do. So those of us that work with her daily know that she knows no job that is not hers if you ask her to do it. So in addition to, that's always nice to have teammates that don't just do what they think they're supposed to. They help out anywhere, anywhere you ask them to help out, and so we appreciate that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Alright, one more round of applause. Alright, and then we will transition into our student recognitions. And so, I'm gonna ask each of our principals to come up. We're gonna start with our high school principal and kinda work our way down to early childhood. And so, when they're, for those that are present, when they call your name, if you would please come up and stand on the stage, and then we will just keep all of our students up here down the line. We do have a certificate for you, so the board president will give you their certificate. If you can come up on the stage, then the principals will read your nomination. And the main reason we're gonna have you on the stage is the board wants to take a picture with you once we're done. And so, that's kinda how we'll do our student recognitions. If someone's not here in person, we'll still go ahead and read their recognition. And afterwards, I will ask everyone to join out in the hallway. We have a nice backdrop set up, so if you'd like to get a picture of your child, if you'd like to get a picture of them with the principal, or if you just want someone to take your picture, we've got a nice backdrop set up. And so after we're all done, I would invite you to head out to the lobby, if you so choose, and get some pictures taken. So without further ado, I'll have Dr. Myers come up and talk to us about our high school series.
Thank you, Dr. Brock. AHS is recognizing Suraj B. of the 10th grade tonight. Suraj is a sophomore in Summit Learning Chemistry at AHS. He consistently sets the bar academically. He's an example of what a student can achieve when they consistently focus on building their habits for curiosity, academic tenacity, and self-awareness. Suraj asks deep, thoughtful questions and immerses himself in the chemistry content that we are studying. He's always looking to learn more and for new ways to apply his learning and make real world connections. Congratulations to Suraj B. Destiny D. is an 11th grader. Destiny joined our biology class this semester. The teacher has since come to know her as a student who highly values learning. She's prompt with her work, and it is completed to the best of her ability. On multiple occasions, Destiny has pushed herself through challenging material in moments of not understanding. Moreover, she has asked for help and never gives up. She's a model for her lab group and students in the class. Destiny, your resilience and desire to grow and learn will carry you far. 9th grader Taylor E. Taylor goes above and beyond what is expected of her. She is respectful to adults and her peers. If another student is struggling, whether it be academically or emotionally, Taylor will step up and help them, whether she was asked or not. Taylor is not only hardworking at school, but she also sews on her own clothes, which she's quite good at. Taylor is very involved at school, and she is very kind to everyone. She displays leadership qualities, which is a very rare trait as a freshman. And then, we also have present with us Cory S. of the 9th grade. Cory has done a great job at adjusting his efforts to turn around his performance in English class. As many students this year, he struggled with focus and motivation last semester in his grade, and English did reflect that. This semester, the effort he has shown has been much, much better. Likewise, his improved participation in class reflects better learning of the content and how it relates to our world and his life. While Cory may not be happy with his overall performance this year, we at AHS celebrate growth. His improvement within one school year, especially this particularly difficult and challenging school year, is a true sign of his increasing excellence. Thank you.
On behalf of Rogers Middle School, I'm here to nominate Brayden Britt. Does Brayden come on up? I'm reading Brayden's nomination from his Team Summit team of teachers. Brayden comes to school each day with a smile and works his absolute hardest. Despite challenges, he comes to school being a good friend to all and an absolute joy to have in class. He's the first one to offer a helping hand to a peer or teacher in need. Brayden is always prepared for school, never has a late assignment, and stays on top of everything. We are in awe of his strength. Brayden is strong, courageous, and we are so lucky he is a part of Team Summit. Congratulations.
Hi. We have one student from GOTS to recognize tonight. She couldn't be here, though. It's Lila Lawless, 5th grader. She was nominated by her teacher, Mrs. Byer. Lila is a great role model and friend in our classroom. She always, is always giving her best effort with everything she does, while encouraging and helping others to achieve their best. Not only does she excel in school, but she also participates in circus. She puts many hours per week into her passion and practices and performances. I am continually amazed by all she does and accomplishes.
Alright, good evening. We have three students to recognize from May year tonight. The first is Jawan M., high school 25. Jawan consistently exemplifies kindness, helpfulness, and an all-around positive attitude. Each morning, he waves and says hello. He listens and follows directions quickly and is a good example for his peers. He is a responsible and respectful young man that can be counted on to make good choices. Next, we have Jennifer Romero-Sandoval, a 2nd grader. Jennifer is a wonderful student. Jennifer comes to school every single day with a positive attitude and is ready to work. Jennifer is a student who never gives up, even when things can get hard in the classroom. Jennifer is also a wonderful friend to have. She's always kind to everyone, and you can always count on her to make a friend feel better if they are feeling down. Jennifer is a very good role model in all academic and social areas, and May year is lucky to have her. And last but not least, we have Penelope Schnabel, a 2nd grader. Come on up. Penelope has always been an incredible student, but the past few weeks have truly shown what an incredible friend she is. She's empathetic, kind, and inclusive to every child that she interacts with. She has established strong relationships with every single peer in the classroom, including students that are not always keen to initiate conversations or collaboration due to shyness. Penelope has a way of bringing out the best in her peers, and because of her intentional efforts, the teacher has seen students thrive in ways that they hadn't before. She has always been a huge support to our new students that are still learning our school day and how to communicate in English. This has been a huge comfort to our new student and has allowed her first views of May year primary school to be a positive one. I am so thankful to be Penelope's teacher. I truly believe she has brought out the best in all of us. Congratulations.
I get to talk about two friends from Acton Early Childhood tonight. Nora B. exemplifies an act and strong student with her kindness and humor. She goes out of her way to let the other students know she cares by making them cards or writing someone "We miss you" and "Get Well Soon" notes. Whenever someone is down, Nora has a knock-knock joke to make everyone laugh. She always brightens everyone's day. And finally, last but not least, we have Harper H. Harper is a natural leader in the classroom. She always volunteers to help her teachers, tries her best even if the work is hard, and always has a kind word for another student. Harper has friends in every classroom because of her kindness to make everyone she meets feel welcome. She exemplifies act and strong.
I'm gonna have you guys come and stand on this step right here.
I've never done this. We remember how to do this. Alright, hold your hands up a little bit. There you go. I can see all of you. Alright, here we go. Ready? One, two, three. I'm gonna move that away, so.
And as I mentioned, parents, please feel free, out in the lobby, like I said, we've got a nice backdrop. It's got the Acton logo on it, so if you want additional pictures with your child or certificates, I think the principals will head out there. If you want a picture with the principal, or if you want the principal to take a picture with you and your child, feel free to do that. We're gonna go ahead and continue with our agenda. Thanks for being here, and thanks for all you're doing to make your kids act and strong. Appreciate it.
Never hurts to clap. Alright. We will keep going. And now we are on Section 4, Consent Agenda Items. Administration recommends, and I so move, that the board approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Tonight, that includes minutes from March 15th, PD Agreements, 2021-22 Return to Learn Plan, and Disbursements. Anybody have any comments, questions, anything that needs to move around? Alright, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. So now we move on to Section 5, Reports, and we will start with our superintendent's report.
Alright, thank you. Just have a few items here, and so one of them, you know, just like everything else, we're running just a little bit behind. I missed the February recognitions back when we had our meetings in March. The meetings that are on like the 1st and 15th sneak up on you, and you forget to do those things. So these are our February, I guess, recognitions for our staff. These staff members received a cougar compliment from one of their colleagues. And so, the February cougar compliments go to Nikki Halick, Tim Hill, Stephanie Johnson, Lisa Reiniker, Vincent Romberg, Stephanie Rice, and Jamie Rouge. So congratulations to those staff members as being our February cougar compliment recipients. And then, thank you to several of our board members who are here for participating in the Missouri School Board Association's Spring Regional Meeting. Riverview Gardens hosted that meeting at one of their schools, and so the program included a number of presentations from local districts, so we enjoyed seeing that. Also provided an update on legislation that is making its way through Jefferson City. And then overall, was able to spend some time with other board members and some conversation among ours. So thanks to those board members who made the time to be there. And then also, as many of you have seen, last week on Monday, so the 28th, we officially had teams play on the new field in the stadium, and so you can see some pictures there. And so we're very fortunate to have our girls soccer team be the first to play on the field. They had a resounding victory, 8-0, so we'll hopefully keep that up. I was able to watch them for a little bit last night. But overall, we've also had a track meet, so beyond just the field, we did some upgrades to other facilities that the track team uses, and so I know they're putting those to good use, and they've already hosted a meet in the new stadium using some of those new facilities as well. And so we still are putting some final touches on the video display that goes over our existing scoreboard, that interfaces with the new press box. And so we have a new press box on the home side. We actually have a visitor's side of the field now with a nice set of bleachers for our visitors. And so those are the things that you can visually see are in place. We do have a couple other things that we want to finish off. One of the things that you'll notice are new dugouts for the baseball softball field. And so, not quite finished with what we consider upgrading some of the things in the stadium. There's gonna be some significant fencing that also goes around the fields, and so that's also yet to come. And so, big, long story short, whenever all of that is complete, we'll do a nice community engagement event so everyone can come out. And but most importantly, we don't wanna keep our kids from enjoying the field, and so but wanted to make sure you knew that's underway and putting that to good use. And then last but not least, I know we do have another board meeting before the SOAR Awards program is released, but just a reminder, a lot of the prep work that goes into that program is being done. And so a lot of the recordings that are going on are happening, and so that program will be released April 20th at 7:00. So make time to watch that. If you can't watch it live, it will be posted, so you can always watch it after the fact. But lots of good things that are gonna be revealed, I guess you could say, on April 20th. So with that, those are some of the things that I wanted to point out.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Yeah, Ken.
We had like a board night in the press box. We could watch a game from up there?
I think so. I know we're, we're working on not only the press box, but something that, you know, we're also kinda working on is maybe a special little area that can be reserved for groups of teachers, board members, or just, you know, if we have special guests. I know we have a lot of alumni that come to the games as part of a class reunion. So we're also, that's another thing that's kinda in the works that we're, I know Jeff and Steve are working on, so that if we do have different groups that come to events, whether it's a football game or it could be a number of different things, that maybe they have a little space that's special for them, that they feel like they're acknowledged, so. But absolutely, yeah, we'll make sure that we have time to observe all of it, yeah, for sure.
I had forgotten that we were trying to do graduation there, so I'm already like sending out the good vibes for the weather that night, when Claire reminded us today, so. Alright, then we are moving along to 5.02, and that was Special School District's Governing Council Meeting Update.
So March 7th, we had a Zoom meeting again. But first, we went over the Parent Advisory Council update, and they were mainly talking, they telling all districts, get to know your families better and understand the kids' needs, and talked with Katie Mears about that. And since we have people on the council, and they go over all these things, so I, from their conversation, I feel good that things are moving along fine. We did a public review committee at law requires over four years to determine if SSD is fulfilling its duties, which is a review of structure, governance, administration, financial management, delivery of services, cooperation with component school districts, district's roles as advocates for special needs children, and compliance with the needs and concerns of the citizens of SSD. So they went through that, and everything is good. We had a budget workshop for fiscal year '23, and that mostly covered staffing requests and additions and budget assumptions for increase in salaries and benefits. And we revised the fiscal year '22 budget. And we also elected two more board, well, two board members to the Special School District Board, which is Mr. Scott Muller of Sub-District 4 Ferguson-Flores, and then Ms. Katie Potroff from Sub-District 3 from Parkway. That's it.
Great. Alright, thanks. Ken, any questions for Ken? We appreciate you continuing to attend those meetings and keeping us so informed. It's really great. Alright, so that takes us to 5.03, and we are gonna do the next part of our book study. So we have been reading together this year, The Governance Corps. We're nearing the end at this point, and Mr. McNeil is gonna lead us in some conversation about Chapters 6 and 7.
So, do you have a chance to review any of the comments that I put out there? One of the things that stuck out to me in Chapter 6 was specifically the idea of trust and how it affects the governance of a board. Any comments on that? I had put some questions out here. I won't just read them all. But any, any of those questions bring up any thoughts, and you're, for each, any of you?
About the trust, I mean, I feel like when I had come to you guys and asked questions, or I trust that you're gonna give me your best judgment, and I'm gonna give you mine, but that's important to me.
Yeah, I reflected on, I think we do have a lot of trust, not just on our board, but of our administrators as well. And I think that shows through in our work. The one thing that I'm looking forward to and that we have started to really enjoy is being able to be a bit more naturally connected these days after all of this time of so much distancing. And so like, I'm looking forward to being able to do our retreat this summer, because I think, while it's not a requirement that everybody is best friends to be on a board together, it's helpful when we know each other better, and so I've enjoyed, you know, kinda easing back into that a little bit this year. I think that helps us build trust.
I don't think there's any trust missing or broken. I mean, I find that if, I wanna know how you're feeling, but any of yous feel about something, I'll just ask you.
Right.
And it's, you know, I've never gone away lacking something, so I think, I think it's overall pretty alright, because from what I hear from some of the other boards out there, that there's a lot of mistrust, so. I agree. I think we're doing right.
That was one of the things that stood out to me, is I was thinking about the other elections that are going on right now, and some of the very boisterous discussions going on outside polling places. And very thankful that we don't have that here. And we're, not all boards around here are in that position. I think part of that comes from having a level of trust. Not, not just within the board, but as Michelle said, with administration. It's pretty important. And then if you go to the bottom of page 117 and 118, we do a lot of good things as a board, and kinda stay in the right lane and within the governance idea. But one of the things that this book puts forward is the idea of adopting protocols. And, you know, we've even talked in, Patricia Firey members, talking in past board iterations of how do we, we do some good things, how do we write it down? Well, this, the book is suggesting a process by which we do it. And I was really curious, when you read those, what thoughts came to mind? I'll read them out loud here. The four reasons they give to adopting good protocols is the discussion leading to the agreement, resolving problems before they occur. We identified both of those in the last discussion on trust. And then orientation for new board members, which I know Bridget has commented to me a lot about that being important. And then benchmarks against which board self-evaluation can occur.
Yeah, you know, for me, I keep thinking about the orientation for new trustees, because there's always going to be turnover, right? And we, and so, thinking about your comment about what's going on in other districts, and eventually, we will have new trustees. So, you know, how do you instill, you know, kind of some, some procedures that while you're building the relationships to build the trust, you at least have some protocols and you have some, something in place to help those new board members kind of maybe get oriented, at least to the business part of being a board, while you build the relationships to build the trust? Because, yeah, I just think that that's, it's gonna be critical. And, you know, I think that's part of what I see is sort of the long-term value of why we did this. Clearly, we're all benefiting from having done this book and this book study together. As we continue to operationalize this, then other people will be able to have the benefit, whether they've, you know, read the book or not. And that's the one that jumped out at me the most, I think.
Yeah, it seems like some of the protocols, they don't come up until something comes up.
Yeah.
We'll get an email, and we're like, oh, new people are like, oh, who should respond to that? And so, oh, we have a protocol for that. Well, we haven't written it down, but we, you know, we do have a process, and we agree on that, and those are things that we can always come back to if it's not working. And so, to continue to put them out and making sure that new board members, and then to remind ourselves that we have these.
I have a colleague who said, oh, I was just gonna say, I have a colleague who says to be clear is to be kind. And nothing makes you feel more like an outsider than not knowing how you're supposed to handle something. And so anyway, we can help lay that out, but sorry, Bridget.
No, I was gonna go back to before being on the board, and we had the meeting with potential board members coming in. That was very important to me, just to learn, like, your protocols and what was going on. It was nice to meet with Dr. Brock and you, I mean, it was Patricia and you, and it was just a great experience, just to know, just a heads up and what to expect. So I really think that that's a great thing to do for people who wanna be on the board, and I think we should keep up with that when it comes time.
Oh, yeah.
Definitely.
So what do you guys think about taking a look at more formally adopting some protocols for the future through that process? What do you think about?
Where would it reside? Would we have a special policy for it, or would you, something off to the side?
It's not a policy. It would, it would literally be like principals' norms and protocols, or we could call them something else, depending on who we were working with, but they would be their own documents.
And they could be in board docs, because we have that whole library of board docs. And so, again, something to have that we could refer to, say, do we have a protocol on that already? Or, you know, or do we need to create one?
Right.
That's where I was going with that, so thanks. What do you guys think of going through that process? Is that something that appeals to you?
Well, I guess we have to identify things that, you know, could go wrong, or things that, you know, and then work off of that, right?
We can each attend another school district's board meeting.
Okay.
A list of all the, I'm sorry.
Who's assigned what?
No, I think so. I mean, you know, the one thing I highlighted at the very end of that chapter on page 120, just right up towards the top, is remember, the power is in the conversation, right? And I think that struck out to me as like, it isn't just about getting a model set of protocols and saying, yep, those look great. They'll help guide us whenever there's a problem.
Right.
Right? It's about, you know, let's converse and talk about, you know, are there tweaks to them? And it's that conversation around them and why we think some are important, or maybe some won't be because, or whatever. But it's that conversation. So I just, it's the same thing out of this, for me, the conversation around the book.
Yeah.
We could have all read this and just been, yep, we did our homework, but.
That's right.
Yeah.
But it shares, it expands the pool of understanding. That's what, that's what I'm hearing, which is good.
I just think that the value in having someone else come and join us to do it is that it takes all of, all of us out of the leadership spot and puts us all in conversation with each other, as opposed to one or two of us facilitating the conversation. Well, then we've already changed the dynamic between the people having the conversation. So I think that's where, when I think about having a facilitator come in, that's what appeals to me, is it makes it more of a conversation and less of someone guiding the other board members, which is how, you know, naturally our conversations can tend sometimes.
And I started thinking about, like, what are our protocols? What are things that we do that we've kind of agreed to, you know, in conversation through the past? And so, maybe we should. And so maybe we should write those down and start with some of those. And then, and then where are there areas that we might need to have some kind of protocol? So I was just kind of thinking of some that we do already and I'm like, I don't know that that's written down anywhere. I don't know. Dr. Brock, it's probably in that binder somewhere.
If it's not, we'll make sure.
It's been like a couple of years though.
It's in that filing cabinet.
It's in that binder. I have it.
But to your point, Patricia, if I can just say, you know, I think it's interesting to start, for us to start the conversation with what we think we already do well or that we, we notice doing, whether we acknowledge it, but, you know, we'll be forced to think about it and start putting it out there rather than starting with somebody else's list and then also, oh yeah, well, we do that, well, we do that. Like it would be interesting to see what we all think are sort of the norms, especially the ones that are sort of that unwritten kind of thing that, that we do already.
I guess the thing too is it doesn't ever have to be finished.
It's not finished.
Just don't forget, you can't forget it's there so we can keep building on it.
That's a great point, Ken.
This rewinds just a little bit, but I wanted to mention that the fourth thing, the benchmark against which boards self-evaluate, I know I keep reminding, but MSIP six is going to demand that we are evaluated in different ways than we've done in the past. So this is another way that helps us to get ready for that because we are going to have to be doing that and we're going to have to let other people evaluate us too. So just part of it.
We could always choose not to, but it may.
Well, if we value being accredited, we probably would like to move forward with that.
Just saying, it's always a choice. All right. So then moving on to chapter seven, I thought chapter seven was, was really interesting. But on page 124, I thought it was a very interesting description. There's a, there's a bunch of sentences that if you look at them as a whole, it's talking about aspirations versus beliefs, desires, strategies, and then finally vision. And what I was kind of trying to get at my question there is, one, do we tend to focus on one of those five? Or do, you know, and do we spend enough time on the vision? Do we talk about our aspirations or we talk about beliefs and what we think is going on, what we desire to have, or strategies of implementation? Or are we talking about the vision of where we're heading?
I think these things just happen as we do things in the district. I mean, whether it's talk about a project or curriculum or students' needs or whatever. I think it's just, I don't know that it's on purpose though, that we say this is the vision, we're looking for this in particular. I think a lot of it's just, we're just doing it.
Having just come through the CSIP process, we certainly touched on these things more in the last 18 months than we might normally talk about them.
That's where I remember most of it.
And where this jumped out at me is I didn't think about, when, as I read this, I, my mind kept going towards each of us, I feel like do this, have, you know, focus on these different pieces individually at different times rather than thinking about how does, how do we collectively as a board focus on any one of these things? To me, it was, you know, some of us are maybe more focused on certain aspects and others on other aspects in that list that you had there from page 24, right? And so it just sort of struck me that is, that it was reinforcing in my mind, the way I interpreted it was that people will have the different focuses depending on what we're talking about and that that's part of, you know, we need to acknowledge that that happens. And then I think that's part of the richness too. That's what I did.
Any other comments on that? All right. Well, then on page, the last part of the chapter, that's 122 all the way through 133, it's discussing the governance responsibilities of the board. And I found it interesting the way they broke this up. I'm not sure I entirely would do it this way, but it's, it's a perfectly valid way to do it. And it's establishing strategic direction and related outcomes. And then two is providing ongoing policy direction and approval. Three is stewardship and support for the work of the district. Four was oversight and accountability. And then five was community leadership. Did this, did this spur any thought in your mind as you read it about how they broke it up and where things were included?
I like mentioning community leadership like that because I think especially in Afton, and we've talked about this a bit, you know, Afton is actually a geographic location. A lot of school districts in St. Louis aren't. There are a whole bunch of communities glued together, but we are a place and we are a place that lacks our own government. So we don't have a mayor in Afton. You know, we have, we have a school board and a superintendent. And so in a lot of ways, I think particularly in Afton, we, we are community leaders in even a, a unique way for a school board because we are the elected officials, you know, that our community identifies with, I think. So I like that they put that there.
I really like the word stewardship being in there because I think that is a really important concept that we are, I thought it was interesting that they did not include the budget approval in the stewardship area, which I, I always tied the idea of stewardship of the taxpayers' money as they, they contribute to the running of the school district. And so it feels like a stewardship of the kids, a stewardship of, of a lot of things. And I really like that word being in there, not ownership, but stewardship.
But I did appreciate that they talked about the fiduciary responsibility and, and I put a star next to this, that the district's budget is in reality a policy document equal to, if not more important than the district's strategic plan because it's what we do with those funds. It's how we steward those funds to, to realize that vision. And I don't think sometimes that we remember, I mean, we know, we're like, oh yeah, we've got to approve this money and we got to approve that money. And Steve's like, oh yeah, we need you to approve this one too. And yet it's really as important as, because it's part of that vision.
Shows what we value. We can say we value whatever we want, but if we're not funding it, then we don't really value it.
No, I remember being on a board once, not this board, but, and having the director of the organization all of a sudden just drop in front of us, oh yeah, we want to, we want to liquidate these investments and do this. And, and there was a lot of, yeah, let's go, let's go for it, let's go for it. And some of, a couple of us were saying, wait a second. This is, this is, and we started asking questions and diving into it and eventually really were able to redirect things into a more healthy path. So it's important for the, the budget to not be just a rote exercise. I think this is what I was hearing you say, Patricia. Any other comments on the two chapters?
Well, I just know, just since we're working our way, I think, towards having this formalized conversation, I think with our retreat this summer, it was just timely because, and certainly intentional, I'm sure, Michelle. It's because you know it's coming, right? But just, it just, those conversations plus reading the book, just kind of, I'm looking forward to that this summer.
And so I'll just close with saying that I'm, I was, in my first notes I made in the first chapter, I wrote down the word trust. And so I was really glad that they got to that in chapter six there, pretty heavy. And I will tell you, we need to protect that because trust is gained in small amounts or they, what's the quote? The trust is gained and drops and lost in buckets. So it's a, it's a big deal and we've got it, let's not lose it.
Part of that trust too is, and I've been thinking about this, making sure that we are sharing information if we have an understanding of something and so questioning things. And, and then like maybe I'm, I, I'm going to vote a particular way and somebody's not. And so sharing that information about why you wouldn't vote that way or why you would vote that way. It doesn't mean that you're trying to convince the other person. It's just making sure that they understand where you're coming from. And I think that's really helpful because otherwise you can leave and go, what the heck just happened here? And I don't, I don't know because we didn't have those conversations.
Yeah, it's critical to have that communication.
And with our administrators too.
Right, exactly.
But we love surprising them.
And they love what we do.
I don't love surprising them.
All right.
Thanks for the question, Mike.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Thank you. So I think I'm going to scan, it's been a little while since I read the very end of the book. So I'll scan it and see if it makes sense to do one more book study as part of a meeting where we wrap it up. It starts getting into sort of the logistics though too, so I'll see what makes sense and I'll put it out to the group.
Sounds good.
All right. Section six, citizen comments limited to agenda items. I don't believe that we have any citizen comments. All right. Section seven, school improvement items. Mr. McNeil.
All right. Well, back to me for policies. Okay. So we have three policies for information tonight for a first read. Policy EBBC lactation support. Policy JGA corporal punishment. I can't believe that's still there. Policy, oh my goodness, I lost focus. Policy JGGA seclusion and restraint. So any comments from administration on those? They seem pretty straightforward to me.
Yeah, I just wondered if they, I mean, do they change anything or cause us to need to, especially the lactation support one?
No, I think that, you know, really I was kind of on the front lines of hearing about this as legislators were crafting it. They were very intentional to ask that they're not putting undue requirements on districts, like they have to make modifications of facilities or that, you know, is, is this reasonable to say that a good district's already doing this and that this can be accomplished and probably is already being accomplished? And so I think that that is helpful anytime someone, you know, tries to make sure that it preserves, you know, a right or it preserves the ability for things to happen, but also trying to be mindful that it doesn't, you know, then require folks to, you know, do additional modifications that maybe they're not prepared to do. And now this, you know, puts them in a weird position of, of having to figure out how to comply with it and then also maybe not having a pathway. So I think that's, that's always, you know, nice that that forethought is put into a new policy prior to it just being thrust upon districts.
I did have a question about this one. There's a, there's a phrase in here that I wanted to make sure that we are clear about what we're using. It says, it's under lactation rooms and it says that the superintendent or designated name will identify at least one room that is not a restroom in each school building to be used exclusively for lactation activities. And that kind of put up a red flag for me because I'm like, do we have a room in every building that isn't going to be used for anything else? So I'm wondering about that word exclusively.
I think that for the most part, if, to your point, it's not like if we didn't have anyone needing this, we probably wouldn't just hold it.
Right.
But, so I think when it comes to the need is there, I think that's when it probably becomes more exclusive so that people know that that, that space is going to be preserved so that, but yeah, I, good, good point in regards to we probably don't have somewhere that when, when it's not needed, we just hold it in place and say, don't, don't ever use that for anything. So that could be something we want to look at.
Research that and say maybe as needed or something like that. And I didn't know if that was language that came from the, I tried to look it up, but I couldn't find the document, the HP whatever that passed. I just was really concerned because I remember when we, you know, walked through the buildings and we had like, you know, we were using storage closets for lots of different things, you know, just for teachers lounge even. And I know we've done a lot of work in our schools, but just to have space that's just sitting there exclusively for lactation. I thought, mm, I don't know where that is in all those buildings. That was it. That was all that I found in all any of them.
All right. So any other comments or questions on this? Again, this is for information only.
All right. And we will move on to section eight, personnel items. And it has been, my computer's frozen, but it has been a busy week in personnel. So Dr. Brock, I'm going to ask you to just give us any updates that we need before we move forward with voting on this tonight.
Yeah, probably the things that are, you know, probably the, the most straightforward, you see the list of retirements and resignations, so pretty self-explanatory there. And that, you know, the one thing we proactively did for many of those positions is get them posted. We thought we might have some openings, especially in areas that are hard to fill. So as much as we are officially accepting some of the retirements and resignations, we had already started recruiting candidates. And actually, when we pivot to the recommendations, you'll see that we already have recommendations for those for that very reason. We thought that there would be some hard to fill positions and we hoped we might be able for some of the things to time them perfectly to where we were accepting a retirement. And then we, we already had a good replacement in, in line. So that's, that's always good to see. We do have a couple of transfers that you'll notice. And so for example, you know, one of those transfers is taking on a, a new role next year. So we needed to hire a classroom teacher and we have someone that's, that's able to move into that. Likewise, we have some people that are just, they're already with us and they're just taking on different roles next year. So that's always nice to see that we think we have people that can step into those, those new roles. And then when it comes to the employment recommendations, like I said, certainly many of those are, are nice that they're hard to fill positions. So we got a jumpstart on them. This is an additional fax teacher at the high school. We had previously had two teachers and we have been kind of making do with one. A lot of that had to do with supply. And so to have two, that's certainly something that we haven't had in a while. And then certainly you can see, especially at the middle school level, math and science teachers, really at, at any level, high school or middle school, sometimes you know that the candidate pool won't be, you know, like it is for say, an elementary teaching position. So it's nice that not only do we have the candidates, but we're, we're moving forward and then certainly keeping our, our French program going as well. So that, that's another one to make note of. So those are some that I'll just mention that we were very fortunate to get started on. As much as we kind of hate losing some of our folks, it is nice to know that we are attracting those that can, can keep us going. And then certainly the bulk of a lot of that good news, we've got a lot of people that want to come to summer school. So we need staff to, to fill those positions. And so I think we are on track to, to not have a waiting list. That's why you see a lot of people here. So from early childhood on through K eight, and then even at the high school, you know, all of these positions are, are ones that we're, we're confident we can put to good use as we continue to kind of expand and keep our summer enrollment at high levels. So that's, that's what a lot of those are. And then you can see kind of at the tail end of the recommendations is a coach, a coaching recommendation for next year that we had a vacancy. So with that, any, any questions? I'll happy to do my best.
It's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot. And, and there's, there's more in the hopper. So as I mentioned, there are tons of positions that are literally in progress and, you know, had interviews going on until 5:30 tonight. And so I would expect the next agenda to be every bit as full in a good way with getting some folks in positions. And so there's some that we just didn't quite make the cutoff or weren't able to get them on this meeting. But yeah, lots of, lots of things going on. So thanks to our principals, our HR department for, for staying on top of things so that we don't lose folks because we're dragging our feet. And so I think we've really done a nice job of not, you know, not having too much work at once, but at the same time, we are trying to, to, I guess, tier our work so that once we turn our attention to it, we're able to wrap it up quickly and it doesn't linger for months and months and, and we lose people.
Great.
Well done on this list.
Anything else? Okay. Administration recommends an ISO move, the approval of the staffing changes as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Bridgette? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries six to zero. All right. Moving on to section nine, finance. Mr. Carney.
Yep. First thing is the foreign aftercare tuition rates for the next school year. You recall, we looked at these at the last meeting and just needed some refinement, I think of, of especially kind of the, the before and aftercare rates, the combined rates. And Steve, I don't know if you want to say anything more about it? The numbers are in front of us.
No, we, we updated it. We had a little bit of interruption, so apologize for that. Thanks for mentioning it, Patricia.
Yeah. So just recall, I think, you know, we're getting back to, you know, kind of what the rates were previous to the adjustments, the discounts we've been doing during the pandemic and kind of getting back to a sort of a normal situation before we reevaluate, I think, probably going forward. Any comments on that? See none. Administration recommends an ISO move, the approval of the 2022, 23 before and aftercare tuition rates as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Patricia. And all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes six to zero. All right. And so next item is 9.02. It's the 2022, 23 support staff pay schedule. See, I'll kick this one over to you. As you can see in the comments here, new, new salaries representing a 5% increase. As you can see in the comments here, um, new, new salaries representing a five percent increase over the current schedule. Anything else you want to highlight?
No, I don't think so.
Did anyone have any questions as they were?
I just want to verify, we determined that since this is just a salary schedule, we're all fine to be voting regardless of who in our family works in the district or?
I think so. I think that, you know, really it's now up to us to apply it to people. So really you put the schedule in place and then you leave it to us to, you know, to, to apply it appropriately to those individuals. And so you're not voting on an individual person right now. You'll, you'll leave that up to us when it comes to, uh, support staff.
Thank you.
Good question. Anybody else? Any, any comments, any questions before we move forward?
Excited to do this, I think it's great.
Yeah. District recommend, uh, administration recommends and I so move the approval of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three support staff pay schedule as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kenny. And, uh, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, motion passes six to zero. I love it. Um, all right, and we've got one bid award tonight. It's for the building network, uh, cabling, um.
How is E-rate still a thing?
It is.
It's, it was supposed to in, in the nineties. It's still going anyway.
So it's the E-rate's what, the program or not the program, but yeah, I guess the, the.
So E-rate's a program that allows us to be reimbursed for certain, certain projects.
Who was president when E-rate? That was a long time ago. Actually Bush won, but maybe Bush two.
So, yeah, um, without having a very long discussion on how E-rate works, it's another avenue that we can fit things through that allows us to be reimbursed up to fifty percent for certain equipment and networking, um, services. So we do something through E-rate every year, um, and Adam works with us primarily. So this was, uh, remiring two of our buildings, so in Gach and Rogers. We are intentionally, we're going to face that up in the coming years. This will be, um, something that we're going to do ahead of trying to do some upgrades to bells and things like that under for pilotings and stuff at Gach. So, um, this was made up through the E-rate program. It was only one response. It was from telewiring, who is, who does a lot of the cabling in our buildings in the first place. We're familiar with them. And to show everyone knows if we were going to rebid it, um, because we did have to wait E-rate, we would have to wait a year until next year. So we're going to get, um, additional better funding. So we will save the prices less than we thought it was going to be in E-rate, which is a little pressure.
Do it before they take it away.
I like Dr. picking up the old cabling too, because so many times they do stuff and just leave the old stuff back there. Yeah, that's nice to see.
And it's not a very big award or anything, but I always am concerned when there's just one bid. So is, is this just not a, a business that people are doing now?
It's a, there's people that do it. I would, I would say that having familiarity with our buildings is probably a big thing because, um, especially with the removing of the old wiring legs. If you, if you're not someone who has any sort of familiarity with what's above our ceilings, you know, walls, things like that, it might be really difficult for you to bid on a project like this. So there's, so there's that. And I think the risk of what you might run into that you've signed up for is probably scares some people away. So I'm, I'm sure that that's in there. And then, um, excuse me, E-rate is a national program. And, and maybe, maybe certain local vendors, when you work through them or if there's national members who don't want to do a project in our area, so there's that kind of stuff too.
It started in nineteen ninety-six, twenty-six years ago. It was always supposed to last like five years.
And who was president?
Clinton.
Yeah.
That's in college.
Any other comments?
We've made enough comments at this point, I think.
I appreciate your question and I like the answer, just sort of thinking through why that, we, why we might have only gotten one bid. It's just, it's good to understand. So thanks for that. Administration recommends and I so move the approval of telewiring for network drops at Gach and Rogers for a total of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Patricia. Uh, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes six to zero.
All right, thank you. So then we move to section ten, citizen comments. Um, and we don't have any for the section either. So then we move to section eleven, which is board comments. And you look ready, Bridgette, I'll start with you.
Congratulations, Erica, I'm so happy for you. You deserve it. And I love seeing the kids here tonight. That just, that's my first time having them all here. So I was pretty excited just to see other, you know, kids here. So I was really good.
Great, thank you. Let's go over to Kenny.
Oh, I'm also always happy to see the kids here. Uh, congratulations, Erica. And, uh, I enjoyed this meeting tonight. It was, uh, very, I don't know, light, light area. You know, it's, everybody was nice and, uh, I don't know, just seemed, uh.
It flowed.
A bit professional.
Yeah, I can't think of the word.
Positive.
But anyways, yeah, maybe it's the book study, I'm not sure. A lot of conversation about all the, everything on the agenda, but it was a nice night.
Great, thanks, Ken. Patricia, I'll go with you next.
All right, um, so I also want to again congratulate Erica. We're very excited for you and, and just proud to have you representing our district and the great work that you use. And I just hope you know how appreciated, how much you're appreciated. I also want to thank my fellow board members who put their name on the ballot to run for three more years on the board. And so, um, unless there's a bunch of write-ins, I'm looking forward to working with you for at least another year.
Yeah, so, um, a couple of things. The first one is, I don't know if you were all aware that, um, the high school did a drunk driving simulation on Friday. And I know we'd kind of hit the social medias and that. And, um, so I just wanted to say a couple of things. I just wanted to thank, you know, Dr. Langens, Chris Kapler, Erica for getting Fox Two out there. The Afton Scott, you know, fire district, the St. Louis County Police and Cutis Funeral Homes all brought resources to this thing, this, this simulation that I think, you know, is really important. For as much as we don't, maybe as parents, want to think that our kids, you know, are drinking or are thinking about it or have friends that drink and getting behind the wheel, it is just so important. And, um, and so I, just the, the fact that the high school, the administration, and then these community partners came together with resources to put this thing on for the juniors and seniors at the high school, um, just, I, I thought it was a fantastic thing. I remember when I was in high school, you know, we had the two correct cars out on the high school lawn and a big sign that said, you know, prom on May eighteenth and then be safe, right? But that was the extent of it. This was a whole demonstration program. We had students that played, you know, actors and the victims and the driver. And it was a real kind of, you know, lights blazing, sirens going, you know, simulation. And I, I thought it was impactful. I, uh, I was, I went, um, you know, Molly, um, organized the thing as part of her CAPS program. And so, you know, she's working with Dr. Langens and Erica and the police, you know, fire chief and a police officer to get, you know, all of these resources there. And, um, and so I was there and listening to the students along the upper lot observing this thing and just the impact of, they really paid attention. And it's more than a, it's more than a, an assembly and it's more than just, you know, showing the glitzy, you know, uh, you know, the, maybe the movies that we would probably get and, you know, sitting in, in, in a classroom. Because they saw their friends, they saw their classmates being hauled off in handcuffs and put into ambulances and put into a hearse from funeral. And I mean, I had one person, I heard one student that didn't even know the hearse was sitting over the side. And then when it pulled out in front of them, oh my God, someone died. And it was just sort of like, they were paying attention. And I think it's important. I also just wanted to say about that, that Molly and Maya Franklin, two of our seniors, got interviewed for, um, you know, about this from the Fox, you know, from the Fox Two reporter and represented our district and our students so well in that interview. And it's, it was recorded, but I mean, they're, it's five, you know, and they did such a great job. And I just, you know, it made me think not only for them, but just where they came from and, you know, our teachers and the, all the stuff that they're doing that prepared them, um, you know, for a reporter to say, hey, can I talk to you for a minute? And then they just had a coherent interview and conversation. I thought it was great. My nephew was in town for the robotics competition at Shafitz Arena. And I found out when I was there that the Afton High School Robotics Club was there.
Oh, cool.
Ran into one of our high school seniors that's on part of the robotics club. And I recognized him, he recognized me and we chatted in the hallway for a bit. And, um, thought it was really cool. And one of the things that he said to me was that our robotics club, I said, I didn't really even know that the high school had a club. He says, well, the high school does and they sponsor it, but, you know, we've got homeschool kids and other kids from the community, so it's, it's one of the community clubs. And that really hit me. I thought, that's kind of cool. You know, that it isn't just a high school club and they all know each other, that they're allowed, you know, they, they invite kids from the community that are homeschooled that don't have that maybe automatic network connection to, to be a part of this. And just from what I witnessed over the weekend, you know, construction and coding and kind of the teamwork and the team building, apparently there's a whole business and marketing component that goes on before the, the competition and the leadership. It just really struck me, what those kids are doing, freshmen, sophomore, junior, seniors. And, um, I, I think we could know more about it because I didn't know much and I thought it was awesome in the moment and would love to hear more. I know I'm going on and on, Erica, great. I just want to tell all of you, because I don't think you know this story. I was the director of planning for St. Louis County. We had a community meeting about, uh, a road project on Grabloy Road and we held it in the commons. And I mean, I, you know, Erica afterwards commented like, I, I got yelled at for basically, you know, two hours at this meeting. But what I remember more than that was the fact that media started coming in. And I knew they, I mean, we were hoping that we'd get media attention to this. And she managed the TV, the interviewers, the, the, the reporters and everything as if, as if I worked for the district or she was working for me or whatever. And she'd come over, great, now this person's here and this is what I've already primed them. This is what they're going to talk about, this is what they want to know, have at it. And it was, it, the media piece of that was so fluid. It was the first time, it wasn't the first time we'd met. We were friends by then, but it was just such a step up doing this. Again, I was just in the planning department, I wasn't part of the district. But it was part of what she took on as her responsibility because we were at the high school doing this thing and they were helping that. And I will never forget that. I share that story anytime something like that comes up. And thank you for everything that you do for us. Sorry that took so long. We just have some great things going on.
And then after her, she probably said to you something like, I want to talk to you about an opportunity that I had in the Afton School.
She probably did. Like, have you ever thought about it?
Thank you, Justin. All right, Mike, what do you got?
Well, I want to comment, thank you, Justin, for sharing. Because three of us, our kids graduated, some more recently than others, but some of us a while back. And so it's good to remember, I remember having that excitement for things that were going on in the moment. And so please keep sharing that because that's a, a good reminder of why we're here. And another good example of the board having different perspectives and being able to bring it to bear. So that was good. I do want to comment on something that's been a longstanding thing and that is that a lot of the community is pretty doggone excited about the turf field. I have heard from a number of former students how we should have done it sooner. But at the same time, the, it's been, it's been good. It's been, everybody's excited about it. It looks great and it's, it's neat, it's a neat thing to see come to fruition. And then also, I would also say it's just good to see the kids back in here. And hopefully we'll keep that rolling. I really like seeing those goose eggs on the dashboard. That's a good thing as well. So I'm just, just pretty thankful to see things starting to kick back into gear in here and we're not just isolated. I don't know, were we broadcasting tonight?
We are.
We're still broadcasting.
Okay.
All right, we should always keep.
Okay, thanks, Mike. So I was at the high school today because I have a volleyball player and there were no parking places. I mean, the place is bustling. There, the, the track meet was happening everywhere. I mean, like on every field, there were people from all different districts all over the place. And to your, to your point, um, one of the custodians actually helped me figure out how to get to the upstairs gym because there were so many people, we couldn't even get to it. So he took me from the front of the building, walked me back, unlocked a special door. He had no idea who I was. And he did talk to me about how when he went to school there, we just had gravel up on that field. And somebody, somebody should have done something about that a long time ago. Because look now how we can have all these people in our school. And I just said, thank you, James, so much for helping me right now. I didn't take any credit, but, um, a couple of other things I did want to mention. I don't know if everybody got the chance to look at the things that came down about the legislative session going on. But it was really great to see Doug Beck had a really active role on the floor of, um, speaking about some of the things that they're trying to move forward and help to slow those things down, really made some impassioned speeches about schools. And I was proud to have him as our representation there, but also that he was our former board member. So I wanted to just mention that. I want to say again, thanks to everyone who's involved in staffing. I mean, as the list kept growing of all these positions being filled, there's just so much work happening with all of that at the, at the administration building, but in the individual buildings. And so thank you, so excited to see all those positions getting filled. And congratulations to all the people who are retiring. We, um, got kind of a, a long list this week and we'll have a chance to recognize them in weeks to come. But I did just want to acknowledge that we're excited for them and that we look forward to celebrating them in the coming weeks. On that note, I make a motion to adjourn to an executive session regarding pursuant personnel to section six one zero point zero two one three and collective bargaining to section six one zero point zero two one nine. Do I have a second?
Second.
This requires a roll call vote?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes, that's six yeses. So let's take, oh, five-ish minutes and we'll start all over in the other room?
While we're, while we're here.
Yeah.